Oh, yeah. The government done with their drug dealers.
Yeah, but you know, you can go to Surrey for goodness sakes and have those kind of...
Well, you know, which town is it? It's across from Brownsville. They murder nine, 12,000 people a year.
Oh, no, no, I...
Do you know what I mean? It's just the whole basic...
Yeah.
The difference in mindset. I read about it. So, I've been to Tijuana.
I've never been there. Heard this story.
San Diego had to pay for their secondary sewage treatment. They were dumping everything, everything into the San Diego Bay. And because they did that, it stopped San Diego from having its secondary treatment. Would they have paid for it to get it stopped?
No, you know, I like, I know lots of people who live down there, which has no trouble. And I was worried about driving them. People...
It moves around the country a bit, too, you know. Suddenly there's a flare up in an area where everybody thought it was safe. There flares up there for a while, settles down, pops up somewhere else.
There are cases that I know of Canadians who've gone down there. They're in trouble. Everybody knows.
I would suspect that most, most are in that situation. There's the odd person caught in a crossfire that should have...
Just isn't random, yeah, absolutely. But most of them shouldn't be doing that. I'm good.
It's the same story.
I'm worrying. What are you doing here?
I'm in a silent interlocutor's, I'm just in your face.
Oh. Wow. Good for you.
Yeah.
Good for you. I did hear about it. Actually, you know, I went to lunch with Jean last week, and Jean told me. So I checked it out, and I went, oh my god. So I sent a note to both Santa and Scott. He didn't know about it.
He didn't know?
He didn't know. So nobody knew.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we could.
We could.
Yeah, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Finance actually explain that before we start.
...to the effect that the request for, for a grant by whatever the grant applicant name is, be forwarded to council for further consideration.
Okay. And that's what we can do under five.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. I don't care. Whatever works for you, sir. I'm just here to make you happy.
Really?
Yep. Yep. Go ahead, Dan. We'll have the RCMP have you removed. I'm gonna call to order the meeting at 6:05, and I apologize for starting late. I don't like starting late. Looking to amend the agendas just before we, I seek for approval. So if everybody, hopefully, everybody's looking at the agenda from, that was placed in front of you, that takes us to 4.12. Everybody have that agenda? No, you don't? It was, it was on the table. Does, do we have another one for Counselor Sullivan? Okay. Takes us to 4.12. The first amendment or change is that I'd just like to move 4.4 up to 4.1, just because that the seniors has two presentations this evening, and they'd like to present first. The other agendas item is, just before new business and 4.4 going, I would just like 30 seconds for our Director of Finance to just explain the, the income sheet from last year and how it actually looks like, so that all the council's clear. And then we are going to add, under new business, 5.1, which will be recommendations, which will basically read that the request for grant by whatever group be forwarded to council for further consideration. So we'll go through that 12 times, just as we either approve it or not approve it. Make sense to everybody? Okay, good. So with those amendments, I'm looking for a move mover. Great. We are in committee, so I don't need a second or, all those in favor? Carried. Yes, and then could everybody please move, use your mics? And for the audience, just so that you're aware, it is being videotaped this evening. So if you don't want your name videotaped, you could just hand it to our recorder. Director of Finance, could you just explain the grants in aid from 2013 and what we're looking at this year's budget?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Is it not on? Oh, maybe the soul thing wasn't on. Now it is.
Thank you, your, your chair, Mr. Chair.
You handsome guy.
How, how are you doing? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've just given council a summary document, and what is on this document is all of the grant requests which come forward to Committee of the Whole last year. I've added to it the new applicants that have come forward this year, as well as the repeat applicants. At the bottom of the paper, you'll see highlight in a bit of an orange or peach color, these are the applicants who came forward last year, and they either received a grant or they did not, but this year they choose not to come forward again asking for money, so I left them on the list.
Great. So could I just clarify just the, the last lines, which was total grant funding request for 2013 was 14,121, and the total availability was 26,000, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We had 26,000 available last year, but the grant requests that were approved by Committee of the Whole and later council, only total 14,000.
And this year's request for 2014 is 24,001, 021?
Yes, 24,021.
And have we budgeted a, an amount that we were expecting to have available for this year?
Yes, we will include the 14,121 in the budget as a starting point, but if Committee of Whole and council so choose, we can increase it back up to the 26 or higher.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Sullivan, then Day.
It wasn't a question so much as a comment. If council, or if committee is supportive of actually going back to the original start from 2013 of 26,000, and this year's request total 24,000, I think we could probably get out of here fairly quickly this evening.
Counselor Day?
I just wanted to clarify that where public input would be for this evening, and that I'm assuming that it is after each item, if you want to comment?
Yes, it is, correct. Thank you. Thank you, I should have explained that. Yeah, the public will have an opportunity to ask after the presentation. Moving on, unless there's anything else, seeing none, we will go to 4.4, Wanda Fuka 55 Seniors Activity Center. And if you could use the mic yet, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Rita Perrin, and one of the directors at the Wanda Fuka Seniors, and I was here in the spring, and we did get $1,500, sorry, yes, $1,500. Now, the cost of our bus is $132,000, and to date, we only need $35,000, having collected from various places, and mostly from our seniors, who seem to be continually giving us donations, and we knew that would happen. The grant application did not indicate an amount, maximum amount that we could apply for, and having spoken to somebody, he said there was no maximum. However, we will not ask for the $35,000. I'm sure we wouldn't get it. We are, we did request 5,000. Again, it is a large sum of money, and would do as well. We are expecting to receive $4,500 from a Christmas raffle that the seniors do every year. We just received $950 selling art supplies of someone who passed away. That's how we make our money at the center to operate. As I explained before, we do not have any operating funds. I'm hoping that we will reach our goal by 2015. That way, we can get our new bus, get the old bus sold if possible, and reap a bit more money. My only concern is that we are spending $4,000 each year on general maintenance for our bus. It does go in twice a year because we use it a lot. It is maintained from one end to the other, so that we are secure and safe with our seniors. I would like to, tonight again, introduce Doris London, who is, has something to explain to you about another project. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Hello. As I told you when I was here last year, I'm quite new to the center, and I have been totally amazed over this last year, and I'm going to take a minute to tell you just a little bit of what goes on in the Wanda Fuka Senior Center. The senior centers in San Jac have paid staff. They have a paid coordinator, they have a cook in the kitchen, they have volunteers from the community. Wanda Fuka, we do all this in-house. Everything is donated from the seniors, their time, their money, their talents. People drop in their pennies in a jar in the front. People drop in more than pennies, but it all adds up. And I'm, we've been applying for grants all over the place, and I've been surprised that some of the places we applied, like United Way and the Victoria Foundation, they have given in the past to seniors in Victoria, but they don't seem to think that seniors exist out in our community. And it's a little disconcerting to see that we all pay into these things, but when you go to request, you don't exist. Anyway, once again, I want to emphasize that the, the bus is centered to the activities that go on, and keeping seniors healthy saves the community a tremendous amount of money in providing care in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. I will go to the public for questions, yes, Dwayne? Or Mr. McNeil?
My name is Dwayne McNeil, 487 Sumar Place. My question is, I was here last year when they got their grant, and I'm curious as to whether or not, when they anticipate getting all the money they can to buy the bus, and is the value of the bus going up while they're chasing the total that they're trying to achieve? And is Suburban Motors still donating 54,000 bucks? And is that on top of the 132, or is that after the 132? Oh. Typo. Do you think you'll achieve your fundraising goals to buy the bus prior to the cost of the bus going up on you again, or going up? Right. Is that this year's dollars? But next year? Do you think you have all the money by next year? That's my concern.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
We are working on a project where we're going to be selling advertising to the public. We're going to be asking people to buy a bus for $500, and we're hoping that businesses will be able to take that out of their advertising money, and we'll put a plaque on the back of their, of each seat saying the seat is donated by whoever. If Colwood Council would like their name on the back of one of the seats, we'd be more than happy to do it. And if you know of any businessmen who would like to do it, because every, for the next 12 years, that bus will be, somebody will be reading that advertisement, and when you think of what an ad in the paper costs, and what they're gonna get from us for 12 years, it's pretty impressive.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, that all questions should come through me rather than a direct conversation with each other, so just for future... And any other public questions before I go to committee? Seeing none, I will go to committee. Committee, any questions? Counselor Cullington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to throw you a question to the applicant. In the information provided, I was just sort of curious to know whether you were also getting contributions from other municipalities for this, or whether you know the answer to that yet?
When I came in the spring, I had been to Langford, and we did get $1,000, and the 15 from here. The other municipalities that did decline asked us to reapply in January, that we had missed their budget date, so we will be going back to those municipalities. And all the grants that we applied for, which were not successful, we already have our letters typed and ready to go back out in January. So it has been an ongoing thing since I was here last.
So Colwood is the first one that you've come to?
Yes, and we were so excited when we left here last year. You were the first check that came into our fundraising.
Flattery gets you everywhere. Thank you.
I know it does.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will, oh, I'm sorry, to you, you got a mirror?
I just, I have a bit of clarification on it. So in part of the paperwork, it said the bus was 86,000, and then we've got 130,000.
Because the bus actually costs 132,000, but Suburban are going to sell it to us at cost, and that's the difference.
That's where the 54 removed off of there comes?
That's right, yes.
And you guys are, are yet to raise the 37, 38,000 is what you're...
Yes, the reason I put 35 is because we have monies coming in within a few days, and that is the $900 for art supplies and things like that, and I know some money has gone through the safe that is not calculated in this.
Just wanted to make sure that we had all the right numbers on that one.
Yes, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Any other? Seeing none, I will thank the Wanda Fuka 55 seniors, thank you, so the decisions will be made later this evening. So moving on to 4.1, which will be the Belmont Secondary School Dry Grad Event. Is there anybody here to speak on that? No, look to our CAO or Director of Finance. Does either one of you have anything to add regarding that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Belmont Secondary School, as of the end of the workday today, still had not returned our requests as to whether they would be attending to give a presentation, so if there is nobody here, then I guess they're not going to come. Last year, if you recall, their initial grant application was not successful for funding, but at a later date, council, or maybe it was Committee of the Whole, changed their mind and awarded them $1,000 toward the dry grad after the fact.
Okay. I will go to the public first.
Actually, not totally in regards to his application, but I know in years before, we used to get their financial statements as part of the package at the front door. So I was somewhat taken aback because we don't have all that information, that they actually, you've predicted, budgeted a deficit on their, and I was kind of curious how you budget a deficit, unless this is what they're trying to use as a process for getting grants. But I don't see their whole financial statements as we did in the past, so...
Okay, yeah, good point, thank you. Counselor, or anybody else in public before? Nope. Counselor, or committee, excuse me, Counselor Day?
Just wanted to speak up and say that it may be a little more difficult to get in touch with Darlene Younger because she's, I believe, carried on to provide continuity, but she may not necessarily be at the school, so it just may be a little difficult to contact her, other than through email. And I know that the dry grad is an important event for the, for the kids, to have something to look forward to, and to demonstrate how important we feel it is to be very responsible while they're celebrating.
Any other? Counselor Lucans?
Thank you. Excuse me, Counselor Martin. I think it's nice to see that they've actually got their application in on time this year. I think the previous two years that we've dealt with this, they have not had it in on time, and hence our decision last year at the initial committee meeting to reject it because we had to set some criteria, so it's nice to see that people have got these in on time this year, so I wanted to say thank you.
Mayor Hamilton?
Just one comment. There is a notation on here, and I would hope that this, it's on. Sorry. I would, would have you all look and be reminded that the grad class does offer services out there, and I know Langford's taken quite a use of their, their participation in doing cleanup and tree planting and different things like that out there. So it says in here that they are available for any special projects that may be in Colwood's near future. Our grads are excited to partake in a community project that could benefit our local area. Please feel free to ask to partake in a project of your choosing, or if you'd like us to come up with some ideas. So this is something where I think our Parks Program, you know, many areas could use and engage them in, in, in the giving back of the giving, so...
That could mean Counselors Howdens. Does that work?
Christmas lights gotta get put up somehow.
Moving on then, unless there's any other comments, seeing none, I will move on to 4.2, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Victoria Capital Region. Rhonda Brown.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Brown with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Victoria, and first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the funding that you provided to our organization last year. It was very much appreciated, and you can rest assured that the dollars were used in support of local children and mentoring. Last year, Big Brothers, or actually, in 2013, Big Brothers Big Sisters nationally turned 100 years, and we had a very special moment that, related to Colwood, actually. We had a golf tournament up at Olympic View Golf, and part of our mission for our 100 year celebration was to try to find one of our oldest matches in Victoria, and we were successful in finding a 35-year match, which actually started in Colwood. And Bill, the big brother, in his early 90s, spoke at our event and said that when he first met his little brother, he was hell on wheels, and somebody needed to save the community from him. So it was wonderful to meet this match and spend time with them. Bill, as a big brother, and a local businessman at the time, ended up taking on the three boys who were part of a single-parent family who had lost their dad quite suddenly, and mom was struggling to be able to provide for the boys, and just manage the level of support that they needed, and, and all of the work that goes into keeping them busy and active and engaged in their community. So it was a real treat to, to reconnect with this match, who has reconnected with their organization in a fairly big way, and hear about that period of time, and to know that they were from originally Colwood. We continue to see parents connecting with the organization who are primarily in, in a position where they've had a sudden loss through the death of a partner. They also come to us because they are struggling with a health issue which impacts their ability to manage all of the duties of, of being a responsible parent. We saw an increase in families who were struggling with more issues related to mental health, and children who were struggling with issues related to mental health. So lots of anxiety disorders, depression in very young children, and suicidal ideation, all very, very concerning. That, along with the fact that we saw a significant increase in the number of families seeking a mentor. It's interesting because we campaigned for volunteers through recruitment, and in doing so, families are, become more aware of the service that's provided, and we see more pressure at the door. So we're constantly dealing with and, and trying to cope with the demand for our service, our need for volunteers, and doing the, the good work that goes with monitoring a match and ensuring that kids are safe and volunteers are screened appropriately. In Colwood, we, we saw a slight increase in the number of children served, and that 9% of our total population of children live in Colwood. Some of those are teen mentors who are receiving service from the organization in a slightly different way, and that they are giving back to their community, which is really encouraging. So they are matched with children at a local elementary school who have been identified by this, by the teachers as being at risk, and are mentoring them during the school day. So it's been a busy year, and we certainly, as I said, appreciated the funding last year, and look to request $2,000 again in support from Colwood this year, so that we can continue to address the children who are waiting, and the families who have identified that their child would benefit from the support of a mentor.
Thank you, Rhonda. I will go to the public. Any questions? Seeing none, I will go to committee. Any questions? Seeing, oh, no? Oh, you can sit down.
I will sit down. I did, I did want to say one more thing, and I would love to bring a match at some point to speak to council at, at maybe this meeting. I, the notice seemed like a bit of short notice to be able to do that, to coordinate other people's schedules, but in the future, if, if I could do that, I think you'd really love to hear from a match. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda. Moving on then, to 4.3, Crisis Intervention Public Information Society. Jane?
Good evening, and I'm glad I made it in the nick of time. There was quite a bit of traffic on the way tonight.
Story of our lives.
Story of our lives.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure. So I just wanted to address council and committee and thank you for your time that you're giving us tonight. You've reviewed the application from Need, Crisis and Information Line. Sorry, Need2 Suicide Prevention Education and Support. And I just wanted to update the council a bit on what the program, our programs have been doing over the past year. As you may be aware, we go into the schools and provide suicide prevention education in the classroom. We've been doing that since 1996. And over the past couple of years, we've adopted a different kind of approach to the program that is in line with what we know of sort of best practice that's out there, which is what we call a whole-school approach. So not only are we providing suicide awareness education to the students, we're also providing presentations to teachers and to the administrative staff and other school staff with the basic idea that to create an entire school community that can provide a supportive environment for kids who are struggling so that they can reach out and talk to someone who's going to be more comfortable with a very hard topic and know how to both hear what the kids have to say and how to connect them with the help that they might need. So we're having a lot of good success with that approach. And one of the things that we've noticed over the past year just by way of sort of speaking to the issue of suicide in our society in general and in schools is that as part of the presentation, we do a post-survey with the kids. And in class, one of the questions is that we ask them is if you are struggling or know someone who might be struggling and you want to be contacted by the school counselor, please give us your name or your student number or whatever. And over the past, last year, full 12% of students were responding that they were indeed struggling and wanted help. And so we are able to connect them with counseling staff and also they do leave those presentations with a better sense of where they can go to seek help and support. And also some skills around, basically, if they see a peer that's struggling, they can... They have a bit more of a toolkit in terms of reaching out and just checking in with peers to see if they're okay and also connecting them, again, to that help that they need. In last year, we provided presentations both at Denzmer and at Belmont. Denzmer was one of the first schools to sign on as a whole school and so we talked to the teachers there as well. This year, we'll be lining up presentations there and we are also going into the West Shore Education Center and they call John Stubbs. Last year, I think we reached about 220 Colwood students with that program. The other program we have is, we call it Uspace.ca and it's, we provide online emotional support. It's a website where young people can go and connect. There's a forum there and also every night, we have a chat service that's open. And the chat service is open from 6:00 to 11:00 every night and we've just managed to be, to open it up at 12:00 on Fridays and Saturdays nights. The chats are one-on-one with a trained volunteer. And we provide, basically, it's something very similar to what we, when we were the crisis line, provided on the phone lines. Basically, it's a listening, nonjudgmental place where kids can go and talk about what's going on for them. The online medium, we chose that because that's where kids are basically hanging out. They're spending a lot of time there. And it was important to get some positive messaging about mental wellness and about suicide on the web and available to kids. And we have, in that particular program, we have about 40 volunteers trained and supported doing the work and having those conversations with kids. The online medium, we've found that the chats we get are of much higher acuity than we used to get on the phone lines. About 25% of the young people who come in, basically what they want to talk about is suicide, self-harm, and those kinds of issues. So that's a summary of what we're doing. And council has supported us in the past and we would really appreciate if that can continue in the future. So certainly open to answering any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Public? Yep.
I do have a question in concern to the financial information included at the bottom. The society has ran a deficit for the last two years. And is this society's viability jeopardized by lack of funding? Will it survive another year and does it affect its ability to maintain its programs?
Thank you.
To put a bit of context to that question, we were in, we've been operating as a society for 42 years, since 1971. In 2010, we did, because the health authority decided to consolidate and relocate the crisis line to Central Island to serve the whole island, we lost a huge proportion of our funding. The board of the society at that time looked at the other programs, the suicide prevention programs and the online support, and felt it was very important to maintain those in the community. And so we've been working towards that. The last couple of years have been, there have been challenges around the funding and we're still not out of the woods yet, but we have been increasingly adopting strategies that are diversifying our fundraising efforts. And while in the nonprofit sector, there's a certain element that makes viability always an issue at this point in time, we are moving forward, basically, believing that we will be in a position to be comfortably sustainable within another year. We had some contingency funds and so that's the way we've been supporting the deficit. We face some challenges that have budgeted implications and those challenges basically relate to a very high demand for our services right now. But we have developed some revenue streams that will contribute to an ongoing sustainability. So we recognize that the deficit position we have been in in the last couple of years is not a place we'd like to be, but we do have plans to resolve that.
Any other public questions? Seeing none, I will go to committee. Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mrs. Arnott. We funded you, I think, over two or three years, something like that. And you always had this interesting formula where you started off at 1,000 and then you built in this inflation factor, which is why we end up with this odd amount of 1,021. I was just curious as to why there isn't an inflation factor this year?
Well, basically, we knew that councils across the region are under a lot of financial pressure. And we really acknowledge the funds that we get from the municipalities across the region as a very strong indication of support for the work we do. And we are able to very effectively leverage those funds as well because of that. So we, well, actually, when I last looked up at the CPI index over the last year of Victoria, strangely enough, I don't understand why, it was minus 0.8%. So years change. So in fact, there wasn't, if I'd built it in, I don't know. It would have been a few cents probably. Thank you.
Any other counsel or, excuse me, committee? Seeing none, thank you. Oh, sorry, who?
One question. Just you mentioned you have 40 volunteers who are working with you. How are you managing with training, given you probably had a lot of trained volunteers already in place prior to the change in 2010?
Well, actually, no. Most of the phone volunteers, we had some of them who were doing chats as well. But Need2 was such a sort of community institution, if you want, most people had to kind of say goodbye when it closed down. Plus, the dynamic of a chat is very different and a lot of volunteers weren't comfortable either with the medium or with keyboarding. So we have, in last year, we trained 30 of those 40 volunteers and we'll continue to train probably between 20 and 30 a year because of some turnover. We don't have any trouble recruiting the volunteers and we've taken what was a very solid training program and refined it specific to the chat as well. We also have about 10 volunteers now involved in the delivery of the school awareness programs. And they're also, we had some carryover there, but a number of them are new to the program as well. And those are the biggest costs of our agency are the costs for the staff to do the training, to do the mentoring, to do the support of the volunteers. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to 4.5, the Royal Canadian Legion Princess Edward Branch 91.
Good evening, Mayor Hamilton, committee members. My name's Jerry Bovan. I'm the treasurer at the Legion Branch 91. On behalf of comrade Dave Bennett, the president, he couldn't make it here tonight, sends his regards and regrets. And the entire membership, thank you very much for your kind donation last year. And you can see that, I don't know who all attended this past remembrance day, but it was a wonderful celebration and to a large measure, what you contributed to help to have that happen. So your time is valuable. It won't take much of it. So perhaps I'll pose it, are there any questions I may answer at this time to move things along?
Great, thank you. Public first. Seeing none, committee? I have one question, just, and I don't know if this is a project typo thing, but it says project schedule is for November 14th. Is that, is there some?
I noticed that too in Good Eye. I'm going to check on that. I don't know why they're moving around. I'm pretty sure it's on the 11th, so I'll pick that back. Thank you very much.
Well, no, I didn't know, long weekend or something.
I'm pretty sure it's going to be on the 11th.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I think that's it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah. We are now moving to 4.6, the Westland Medi-Land Society.
Hello, my name is Barbara Phillips and I'm one of the board members and it's actually WestCOM Medi-Land Society.
Oh, sorry, what?
WestCOM. C O M.
Oh.
And we are a small group of people who have cupboard where we loan medical equipment to people for short-term use or in palliative situations for longer-term use. We run entirely on volunteers other than a small part-time office manager position that we have to help us with the paperwork. We are open from 10 till 3, five days a week, and that is all run by volunteers. We rely on donations coming back. People who have loaned borrowed equipment will often donate even $5, $10, $25 when they return it. We also have grants and last year, we were very fortunate that the Poppy Fund provided us with more grants than we had had in years past. And I think that that was partly because they closed their medical equipment loan service from the Legion and realized that they would be relying, their members would be relying more on our services. We get, we do receive equipment donations, which we then put into our loan pool. And we also provide the local DRC parking permits for handicap parking. And that actually has been a real boon to our organization. And the amount paid to us, the fee per permit, has increased and you would see that we've more than doubled our income with that in the last year. So that's been a really great thing. But we are always needing to replace equipment. Equipment goes missing, unfortunately. We try every way we can to keep it within the local areas of the West Shore, but we now require people to bring in like a telephone bill or something or, you know, something that states that they actually live in the area. But even so, things go off to Comox and wherever. We can't always retrieve them. So we continue to purchase new equipment that has not been available in the past and also downgrade our equipment. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Nope. Committee? No, I got the, I got the head shake, eh? Unless somebody else from the public, I guess I should open it up to the rest of the public as well. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. See, I was right.
First time for one.
For once. Yeah, that's right. Committee, Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. Just a very quick question. I'm not familiar with your organization. Have you been around a long time or are you new?
Since the mid-1990s.
Okay.
We started out with quite a bit of support from the Red Cross when they were setting up the satellite offices all over the island. And they no longer support us financially, but often when we go to buy equipment, we will be in contact with them because they can get us better prices, you know, buying in bulk. But yeah, about 1996, I think, was when we began.
And are you also approaching other municipalities for contributions?
Yes, I have contacted Langford thus far. And we have letters going out also to the Highlands and View Royal and Machozen. Those are the areas that we try to keep our equipment within the bounds of because Sooke has their own cupboard and so we try not to loan to Sooke. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor Hamilton? Oh, nope.
Yeah, just maybe you could let them know where the location is on Gulfstream there.
Yes, it's at the priory. It's in, just by the adult daycare at the priory. And there is, we also have a bit of storage for some, you know, extra items, but we bring everything into the priory for loan.
And I will say that I've used their services there a number of times.
But you look so healthy.
Oh, no.
I know.
And we also often loan within the community if people have their, you know, family coming from out of town and need medical equipment for a short period of time. We often do that as well.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to your literacy connection, West Shore.
Hello, I'm Chantel Sait with your literacy connection, West Shore. And I'm representing, my position is a literacy outreach coordinator. And I represent here tonight our steering committee, which has representation from all of the municipalities on that, as well as people from the community and different service providers. The purpose or goal of our initiative in the past three years has been about building awareness around literacy issues, bringing awareness to what literacy is nowadays, which isn't just reading and writing. It's a very important part of everyday life. It's a strategy to living a healthy lifestyle, being part of a healthy community. And in last year, when we talked to community people and really put our feelers out there to find out where the needs were, people felt that bringing more awareness and getting involved in the community and family literacy was very important on the West Shore. So one of the ways we looked to work with community was to build the Family Learning Tour. And that was in celebration of Family Literacy Day, which the city of Colwood did declare as Family Literacy Day in Colwood last year. So thank you. And we want to replicate that event this year to support families and adults as well through their children and youth, as well as seniors, and really make a celebration of literacy and informal learning. Learning can happen anywhere. It can happen in businesses, it can happen in service organizations, it can happen in your home. And offer a variety of different activities that people can take away after that day and do in their own homes and know that we're out there and know that we're out there to support them with where their needs are. I could go on about the event, but maybe I'll start with asking some questions, if you have questions about the event itself.
Great, thank you. I will go to the public. Dwayne?
Is that one question, is whether or not this program is connected to or involved with other institutions such as the Greater Victoria Library or the school districts in resolving some of these issues?
Thank you for your question. Yes, we are. We partner with the Greater Victoria Public Library. They sit on our committee and are very involved in providing services. And we support them through marketing their programs, talking to families and people in the community about what they have to offer, connecting the senior center to the library around computer programming, as well as the Reed Society Literacy Victoria. The school district is also on our committee. And, you know, our focus is all ages, from zero to hundred. And we find that a lot of the work, because it's West Shore-based and the demographic is largely families and young children, that tends to be the focus.
Thank you. Any other public? Seeing none, I'll go to the committee. Councillor Sullivan?
Thank you, through the chair. I just have a question with respect to the budget that was provided to committee. And in your revenue stream, it has deferred monies from Dakota of seventeen thousand five hundred, and it says received seventeen five. Is it just missing the decimal points here?
Seventeen thousand five hundred.
Seventeen thousand five hundred. And what does it mean by deferred monies?
So it's money that we can carry over to the next year. And for the Dakota monies, that's the money that funds the position, so our one-staff position, which is mine. And it does not necess, it doesn't really pay for any programming or services that we provide out.
And no operational money?
Just a position.
Just a position. Thank you.
And can I ask a question? Just in terms of submitting for the questionnaire, all of those documents were provided initially in that package. So if they're not identified here, they have been provided.
Okay. Councillor Lucas?
Thanks, Councillor Martin. Thank you, Chantel. I know you guys have done some great work in speaking with Doug Kobiyashi, who is our citizen representative on West Shore Literacy. He has nothing but accolades about what the group has done. And I know there is representation with respect to that. I just wondered, with the event in January, what, how many people do you see, or how many people does it touch? Do we know that?
So last year, we had between two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty and about three hundred people. And we did find out that there was people from each of the communities. So there was Highlands, Machozen, Colwood, and Langford, as well as people from Victoria that did come out for the event. We didn't keep, you know, immaculate track of who was coming out, what community, and how many, because it was our first event and it was run mostly by volunteers that we just pulled it together. But that is our plan for this year to really make.
Thank you. And I did receive an email from Chantel on the day of the deadline of applications, coincidentally, and was able to fire it off to finance department. And they were able to get her the document in order to get it submitted in time. So thank you for turning that around quickly, because we've tried to make people aware of what the deadline is and to make sure that we don't miss anybody. So good job.
My apologies, and thank you for getting that.
Yeah, no problem. Good job.
Any other questions? Councillor Day?
Your event, is it going to be at Pacific Centre, Valley Services?
Pacific Centre is one of the locations we hold it at. We like, our intent is to approach businesses and different service providers, that they hold them all throughout the community so that people can come in and see what services are there, what businesses exist in the community, and how they each provide learning. So we are supporting those locations to provide different activities.
So your funding is really to put on several events, but all on the same day?
Tiny little, yeah, supporting them with materials, supplies, awareness, advertising, promotion, those sorts of things.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to four point eight, which is Bike to Work.
Thank you very much for allowing me to make this presentation. I'd like to thank you all for your past support for the Greater Victoria Bike to Work Week. Who in the room has not heard of the Greater Victoria Bike to Work Week? So I'll take you back to nineteen ninety-five. There were ten t-shirts for the five hundred participants and fifty teams. And this t-shirt is one of the original ten t-shirts. Councillor, through you, Mr. Chair, councillor, I know who is Sullivan, but councillor Harvey, I would remember this from, this was, the first Bike to Work Week was started by, and this GECO stood for Government Employees Commuting Options. So we move forward to two thousand and thirteen, which the city of Colwood gracefully helped support. And this was our two thousand and thirteen t-shirt. And we had twenty-three hundred of them done and distributed, twenty, sorry, twelve hundred of them went to VHA employees on Vancouver Island. Not bad anymore. Tonight is the unveiling of our two thousand and thirteen yearbook. This is, was just created. Two people I want to speak about tonight. The first one is a retired school teacher from Alberta who lives on Whale Road. He's sixty-eight years old, and he's a security guard at the Vancouver Island Technology Park. Jeff Maudlin rides his bike from Colwood to the Technology Park for every shift that he does. He's sixty-eight years old, and he says it keeps him healthy, happy, and wise, and it helps his pocketbook as well. The second person I want to talk about is a fellow by the name of Tom Sutton and his partner, Joan McIntosh. Tom is eighty years old, and he's a retired graphic artist from Toronto, Montreal. And Tom does all of this for us. As I go through it, it's a pretty impressive document, and somebody if they had to pay for it would pay a large amount of money for it. Tom and Joan get up every morning on nice days. They live Cedar Hill Crossroad in Sandwich. They ride their bicycles to the ferry and back. So riding a bike has to be very healthy for you. I hope I'm able to do that when I'm eighty. You've got this great software. So I'm just gonna slip to the stats for this past year. Well, first of all, there's the board of directors that you see on the left-hand side of the page. On the right-hand side, there's myself, there's Teresa Sullivan, who's our event coordinator, and Marcia Petty-Johnson, who is our skills coordinator. A word about our skills course is that in previous requests to council or to committee of the whole, we've asked for money for our bike skills course. This year, we did not. And the reason we did not is because the Capital Regional District put out a request for proposal for the provision of bike skills courses in two thousand and fourteen to all of Capital Regional District. I'm happy to report that we were the successful proponent, and we will be putting on bike skills courses in all parts of the Capital Region from March through October of next year. So we're very excited about that. And it really goes into the sustainability of the organization, which I've been trying to get since I've been there. This is my fourth year. So we're very, very excited about that. In terms of the stats for the week itself, we had six hundred and fifty teams that took part in the two thousand and thirteen Bike to Work Week. We had almost seven thousand participants. And the most important stat for us is the number of people who've tried bicycle commuting for the very first time. And that was nine hundred and thirty in two thousand and thirteen. That brings the total, in the nineteen years we have been in existence, to twelve thousand people who have gotten out of their cars and tried cycling as a viable commuting option. It's pretty phenomenal, because, and we have not done a great job of tracking how many people continue, but we know there's several. So you think of all the benefits of Bike to Work. The health, both mental, physical, financial, and then the societal benefits, such as less pollution, less traffic on the roadways. So certainly, it helps all communities with their sustainable transportation, alternate transportation initiatives. The chart that you see on the lower right-hand corner is information from Statistics Canada, which shows the level of bicycle commuting in cities across Canada. And the one that you see in the far right-hand corner is Victoria at five point nine percent. The closest to us is less than half of what Victoria does. As we go through, you know, people say Bike to Work, what do you do? It's really when you look at, and the color's not that great up here, it's much better on the screen, by the way. But it's really a phenomenal week of fun and joy. This would be the commuter challenge, where we have teams start from different parts of Greater Victoria. Some started from the capital city center and finished down at Starbucks on Blanchard and Fort Street. And it's really surprising, we had twenty-eight teams this past year. And of the twenty-eight teams, I think twenty-two cyclists arrived ahead of the vehicles, which is pretty impressive. This is just a sample of all the, councillor Cullington, there's a picture of you there. This is a sample of all the celebration stations that we do throughout the Capital Region. The one that you, that the picture in the far top left-hand corner is at the Aldine entrance to the Galloping Goose. And, you know, the celebration station, there's prizes, there's food, there's refreshments, there's information, there's bike checks. It really is a, they're fun. We had eighteen last year. We're gonna have twenty in the coming year. This is the promotion that we do. If you look at our social media, for example, one of the goals that we had for this past year was to have a thousand likes on our Facebook page. And we're finding that Facebook is just an incredible tool for advertising our bike skills and having conversation about people cycling safety. And our reach in it is growing and growing and growing. I think we've got a thousand and twelve, which is pretty good for an organization that has not paid a cent to promote our activities on Facebook. The person at the lower left-hand side of the, or right-hand side of the left-hand page, that's Jeff Maudy. That's your Colwood resident that I was talking about. And then there's pictures of, here's our bike skills program. We have put about twenty-five hundred people through our bike skills course since we started them in two thousand. What's gonna happen this coming year? We have an all-day course. We're having four-hour courses. We're having, they're gonna be done in the evening, they're gonna be done on weekends. So we'll have, we'll have a course, for example, that talks about what the rules of the road are and not going out on the road. So it's good for both cyclists and motor vehicle drivers. So everybody knows what everybody's rights and responsibilities are. And then we'll have the practical side as well. Sponsorship of the Greater Victoria Bike to Work Week. This past year, we had a hundred and twenty-seven partners. A lot of those are people donating prizes, donating food, donating time. For example, we gave away over forty thousand dollars worth of prizes this past year. And we paid a hundred and five dollars for those prizes. So there's tremendous community support here. More pictures. And then, the twentieth anniversary. We have some very, very special things planned. We're gonna have twenty celebration stations culminating on a Saturday afternoon, celebration station from twelve noon till four P.M. We will have a live band, which has been booked. Hopefully, we'll have a second live band. And it'll be in a location where we can get a lot more celebration than we've done in the past. We think that twenty years is a big deal, and we hope that we can survive for another twenty years. So we're willing, we're still planning, and we would love to work with Colwood if there's other things that we can do leading up to Bike to Work Week that will support the constituents of Colwood. So again, thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will look to the public.
I have one question. First of all, the Bike to Work Week, is it, do the participants provide feedback of the event after the fact? Does it include requesting information on their thoughts on the trails that they ride? And is the overall feedback shared with councils after the fact so we have an understanding of things like that?
Thank you, Dwayne.
Great question. And in fact, we do do a follow-up survey. This past year, we've sent a survey out to sixteen hundred team leaders and participants. We had five hundred and ninety-six responses back. Ninety-nine percent of those individuals loved the event. And we've got tons of suggestions on how we can improve the coming years. We'd be happy to share some of that information. And that's actually how we do part of our planning. You've always got to do your check-ins and making sure that you're doing what people want.
Thank you. I will go to committee. Oh, don't go anywhere. Committee, any questions? Sullivan? Teresa, aren't you on the board there?
Yeah, yeah, just point of clarification here. There are two Teresa Sullivans in the Greater Victoria area. I am one of them. And what was the position that you highlighted in the document here?
Teresa Gulliver.
Oh, Gulliver. I thought you said Sullivan. So anyway, that was, I started laughing because I thought it was the other Teresa Sullivan popping up in my, in my world again.
Through you, Mr. Chair, my wife's name is Teresa Harvey.
That's funny.
And just for a point of full disclosure, Mr. Hudson and I used to work together in the provincial government twenty-five years ago now?
It was a while ago.
Something like that, yeah. And I was around for the very first Bike to Work Week, and that t-shirt's just horrible. Much better improved this year.
Any other questions? Councillor Cullington?
Thank you, Chair. This question is actually being asked on your behalf, because last year, you said to me, Colwood contributed money into the, into this, but we didn't end up with our logo on the t-shirt. And I believe the answer at the time is we didn't sort of give a contribution that was a high enough value. But I did actually notice in your submission, it does including putting City of Colwood's logo on our t-shirts and posters. So have you changed the criteria for logoism this year? So, have you changed the criteria for logoism this year?
We like to recognize those communities that support us, and this would be, I think, the third year that Colwood has supported us. And it's such a special year for us that we would definitely put Colwood's logo on the t-shirt and the main poster.
Thank you. Okay.
And it bigger on the website as well, because right now, it's just written out as Colwood.
And we do have a nice new logo as well.
Great.
Yeah. Just one other piece of follow-up in terms of Mr. McNeil's question, which I also thought was a good one. We have taken advantage of the celebration stations at least the last two, probably three years, and we actually kind of have a flip chart up, and we say to people, tell us how we can improve cycling in Colwood. And then that information goes back to our Cycling Advisory Committee, which Mr. Hudson chairs. And so, we do get that information. It's great. Thank you.
Oh, no, stay up there. Any other questions, committee? Yep, councillors.
Councillor Lukens.
Lukens. It's going to go, shh, Lukens. Lukens.
Just a question, if I'm reading this correctly, Mr. Hudson, it says that you received $1,500 last year.
That's correct.
And that you're requesting $1,500 this year. Just in the application that was written, it says, "This funding will be used to offset the costs of planning station logistics, training volunteers, marketing Bike to Work Week throughout the communities of Colwood and Greater Victoria, and the one-time additional costs associated with our 20th anniversary celebrations." I'm just wondering where that fits into this budget, because you've applied for the same amount both years?
Yes, we're very sensitive to the financial constraints of all councils. So, we, in terms of what the funds will be used for, our philosophy is twofold. One, it's when you, I mean, cash is the lifeblood of any nonprofit organization. So, it's great, and we have to do this to get it. When we actually get the cash, the second part of it is how we spend that cash. So, we try to get as much as we can free, and that's witnessed by the tremendous in-kind support that we have. So, we have a bit of flexibility in where we, where we put those funds in terms of where they're best used. In terms of the 20th anniversary, we have a budget figure of $20,000 for that. And that includes things like, you know, if we're having a concert, it includes things like the stage, and the extra tents, and the sound, and things like that. In terms of the normal things that we have to pay for is like trucks when we're moving things, things to celebration stations.
Thanks. It doesn't really answer my question, but I just want to know what the one-time additional costs are, because the requests were both the same.
Oh, the one-time, well, the one-time additional costs are the $20,000 that we have targeted. They're going to be extra costs for our 20th anniversary.
Good enough. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Sorry.
Any other questions by committee? Seeing none, then I just have one. If you look at Appendix B, I don't know if you have a, do you have a, you don't have one in front of you? No, that's too bad.
But I can probably answer the question.
Well, okay, well, I'll just, I'll just sort of help you out. On Appendix B, basically, if you look at the contributions from all the municipalities, you know, you're, basically, City of View Royal, Town of View Royal, excuse me, gave you 500, City of Langford, 1,250, Highlands and Chosen, 250, 200. If we were basically looking at a percentage standpoint of, you know, what Colwood would contribute, it would be about the $750 mark in comparison to all the other municipalities contributing. So, basically, it looks like we're contributing twice as much as, as other municipalities from a percentage standpoint.
Yes, and I don't have all of the information in terms of statistics of how many of your residents actually take part in, in the event.
Right.
I can talk about View Royal, and that I'm having discussions with View Royal because of the connector that they're going to have. And we expect that they might, and this is all stuff that happens after we put the requests in, they might be coming in at a higher level this year because of things that we're doing. So, my goal initially for municipalities was to get all of the municipalities contributing to the event, and I think we've been successful at that. I think that every single one of the Western communities, including SUK, has contributed in the last year. When I started four years ago, there were View Royal. So, and we're sensitive, and we know that it's very difficult to get increases once you've started at a level, unless there's certain circumstances for it, so.
Councillor Sullivan?
Thank you, through the Chair. I'm taking a look at your profit and loss statement with respect to salaries and benefits, totaling, it looks like $18,712.
Yes.
And then I'm looking at your org chart, notice that you have three paid staff positions. How does that reconcile?
There's, like, I'm on contract, so that's the management services. What I will say about all of our operating costs is that our operating costs are less than 18%, which is the United Way's best practice for nonprofit organizations. That includes all of those costs.
Eighteen percent?
Eighteen percent, correct.
Okay.
In fact, if I may say so, we're on a three-year fee-for-service agreement with City of Victoria, and that was one of the requirements to be eligible for that grant, to be in that, less than 18%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
4.9, we are at the Dialogue and Dispute Resolution Services Society.
Thank you for having me and including us in the, this opportunity. This is our first year applying for a grant in aid. For the last two years, we've received permissive tax exemptions from the municipality, so thank you very much for that. And so, this year, at your suggestion, we've not applied for a permissive tax exemption and applied for a grant in aid instead. The easiest way to explain what we do and how we do it is with a little bit of a story. Some of the facts are changed to protect people's privacy. We received a phone call from a partner agency, another community service organization, that a family needed help. The mom had a disability. Dad and mom both had addictions. They're involved with the Ministry of Children and Family. They've got criminal issues pending, and they've got family court issues pending. They need help translating and understanding some of the things that are required from the professionals and the government representatives they're working with. They need some skills to be able to manage their issues between each other, as well as the organizations they work with. And they need to be able to ask for help to be able to support their infant child. We get involved with those families, and we help them do skill development. We help them figure out what they need to do, so we do a little bit of list-making with them. We connect them to other community resources, and we provide mediation where it's appropriate. And those are families that very often end up falling through the cracks. They have multiple barriers, they have multiple challenges. And our services that we provide are a bit hard to describe sometimes, because we don't fit clearly inside any particular niche. All of those families were support, everyone in that family was supported for each of those issues individually in other ways, and they had no connections between them. So, what was happening is a file would move forward in one of those arenas, such as the criminal arena, and then get snapped back because of something pulling forward them, pulling them in another direction. And so, what we helped do was a little bit of case management and a little bit of translation to keep those things going. Those are families that can't pay for those supports and services that they're involved In the work that we do, we partner with other organizations, some here on the West Shore and some in other parts of the South Island. And we provide our services on a subsidized basis, on a sliding scale, based on income and ability to pay. So, some things people pay for, and that helps subsidize folks that have less income. We provide workshops and trainings, some customized for partner organizations, for businesses. And we partner to provide one-time or long-term events with other organizations. One of the organizations that we're partnering with right now is Pacifica Housing. They're located in downtown Victoria. We run a program for them. The Inter-Cultural Association has office space at our office, and Virks, the Victoria Immigration and Refugee Center Society, meets with clients and provides services at our office when appropriate. And so, it's complex. Families' needs are complex. Individual, multi-barriered or marginalized community members' needs are complex. And so, we do our best to support them in very collaborative and supportive ways that will help build their skill and increase their self-efficacy. Thank you.
Thanks. I will go to the public. Yep, Dwayne?
I do want to again have a question, looking at the bottom of the financial information that this organization has run a deficit for the last two years, and I'm once again concerned about the viability of organizations that can't break even as nonprofit societies.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it's a very good question. Well, we did run a deficit last year and the year before. Part of that is because a big part of our energies has ever gone to organizational development and growth, and part of that has been developing an enterprising stream so that we're able to charge fees for services for things that we weren't in the past. So, we've revamped and overhauled our training program, and we've also had to do some work to upgrade the way we were operating in order to bring ourselves in compliance with WorkSafe, because we had folks operating as contractors when, upon closer examination, should have been staff. So, that increased some of our overhead and operating expenses. We also, while we certainly operated a deficit, we own our building, and we have a very low ratio mortgage for that. I should say, we own our facility inside a building, which is located here in Colwood.
Great. Any other public? Seeing none, I'll go to committee. Questions? Councillor Dick?
Thanks. Are you accredited?
Accredited in what way?
Accredited the same way Pacific Center would be accredited by a third party to verify their, their credentials and authority to work in that area?
Oh, so, for the family mediation services we provide, that's the only place where there's regulation or requirements legally for the qualifications of the service providers. So, yes, under the Family Law Act, all of our professionals meet the requirements for being FDRPs or Family Dispute Resolution Professionals. That's the only place where it's required in the dispute resolution field right now.
And do you have a relationship with Pacific Center?
No. So, a lot of the work they do there is counseling-related, and we tend to do work that's more coaching. And so, we don't, we don't provide counseling services at our organization. So, while we have a relationship with them in the way that we do with other organizations that there's cross-referrals, we share many clients, we don't have a direct working partnership of any kind.
So, you wouldn't make any referrals to Pacific Center for different type services than what you offer?
No, we do. So, we make referrals to them, and I believe they make referrals to us, but not with any sort of formal or structured way. So, much as we do with any other, many other organizations as well, but we don't have any memorandum of understanding or specific working relationship.
Thank you.
Councillor Lukens?
Thank you. Just wondering if you're requesting grants from other municipalities as well?
Not this year. We have in the past and have received grants from other municipalities in the past. The, a key part of it is that we have scaled back many of our direct assets this year because we've gone through a massive overhaul. So, we've just gone through a name change. We used to be the South Island Dispute Resolution Center, and we haven't had enough of our material organized well enough to be able to transfer this year, to be able to sit down in front of organizations, to be able to make those grants, make those requests for what we determined to be relatively small dollar amounts. We had to be strategic in how we were going to spend our time, so we had to chase the bigger fish, so to speak.
Mayor Hamilton?
Just a question, Cat. It says in here, facilitate professional development experiences for school district 61. Were schools 62 out this way?
I think that's, that's a typo. So, it is school, uh, school district 62 that she was referring to when, when our office manager typed this up.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question for you. Do you recall what your, how much your permissive tax exemption was last year?
Almost the exact same amount this year. I think it was...
Was it about 5,000?
I think it was 5,500, yeah.
Okay. It was? Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
4.10, we're going to take a break for a moment. So, 4.10 is the Greater Victoria Volunteer Society. Is that a person here? Yeah, okay. We're going to recess just till 7:30, so you've got five minutes to be more nervous. And Dwayne's going to go out and grab us all a hamburger or something, right?
Absolutely not. You know that I have not had a store-bought hamburger in the year. I stopped eating all that barbecue at the past restaurants.
Well, what about, what about barbecue? Do you barbecue them?
No, but because the test is going up, the main will September next year, I'll be barbecuing my burger, so I'll come back.
Well, you know, you gotta, you gotta get one of those little trailers with, behind your Harley that you can just pull the barbecue.
A solar array.
Pull it up, you barbecue me up a hamburger.
A solar array.
Our one set company.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Stretch break is ordered. I thought that was shared, I didn't remember.
Yeah, no, I understood it.
There's something wrong. I've got too much time to eat this day, wasn't it?
Mm, mhm. I'm cold tonight. It's been too busy lately, I just had a freak-out. I went, in my brain, I went, is it Wednesday today?
What did I break down?
Tuesday, it's not the Tuesday, it's all right.
Ah, you know what? That'd be good, too. You can do that. I'll, whatever you want to make. Do like an egg McMuffin or something like that.
Could I bother you? Yes, you may.
Have you done this? Have you? Is it, is it?
Yeah, Rob wants to go on his scooter, can you go?
You'll have to drive a little slower.
Do you know what, you'd be okay, because there's one woman in skirt that shows up every year on a moped, drives around on a motorcycle. So, you'd never be fine?
I'm sure I could.
What about the Cumberland show? Have you been there?
No, I don't go there.
Oh, it's good.
That's too rough.
Oh, it's good. No, it's really good. I was there this year.
I don't go past the border of the Delano.
Why?
Except for police harassment.
Thank you. I can't believe this. Sheesh.
They don't harass you in Cumberland.
We all back.
It's different over there.
We all back.
Point of order, we need to go back.
Yeah, we'll go back. All right, calling the meeting back to order, and as a point of order, or Megan could have yelled at me earlier. In the evening, rather than waiting to a break and be polite. We didn't, we forgot to, we, I'm blaming everybody. We forgot to do number two, which is adopt the minutes of the Special Committee of the Whole of June 25, 2013. So, thank you. I don't need a seconder, so call the vote, all those in favor? Phew, that was a close one. Now, jumping back to 4.10, Greater Victoria Volunteer Society. Can I have some water, please? Yep. Oh, yes, sorry. Sorry. Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, that you are the same as Volunteer Victoria?
Yes.
Because the name changes, so I... Because the name changes, so I wanted to, I put both names in our document, but last year the grant was under Volunteer Victoria.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes. Our legal name is the Greater Victoria Volunteer Society. But for about 40 years now, we've been working under Volunteer Victoria. I'm Lisa Moore-Pudland, I'm the executive director. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and to share a bit more about our work this year. Last year, 264,000 people read volunteer positions on our website. That's a lot of volunteers, it's a lot of positions. We continue to see a demand from organizations looking for volunteer support and specific types of volunteering. We're seeing more demands for skilled volunteers who can help with business planning, marketing, strategic initiatives, fundraising. We're also seeing a lot of great youth engagement and work. And this year, we're going to work with close to 1,600 youth around where their passions for volunteering are, but also how they build workplace and pre-employment skills through their volunteering, and how they think strategically about how they spare, use their spare time and build their resume and really connect. That is very important in this community with a growing family population. And so we're spending a bit more effort this year in the West Shore and are looking at more advising services. We're looking at moving our volunteer appreciation celebration to Royal Roads in April, just to show the community that we're here and that we're active and that the organizations that are here in the West Shore have opportunities for different types of volunteerism across the demographic groups. We're also working with organizations in expansion. There's a Better at Homes program that is moving into a number of communities, including the West Shore, and that will recruit literally thousands of new volunteers to work with senior groups across the region. And we want to make sure that volunteers in every community are active, are engaged, and have the support they need to find volunteer positions, to be successful at volunteerism, and to reap the rewards for themselves and for the community. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Public?
I have a question.
Thank you, public. Going to committee. Anything? No? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving, we don't have anybody else in the audience, so moving on to Synergy Sustainability Institute. I see nobody. I will look to the Director of Finance. Do you have any comments regarding this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The society was contacted on their application for grant funding. We did not hear confirmation back from them. They look to have a very Colwood-friendly kind of a society that works to award green business certification programs. They are, in December of August next month, they're doing a pilot certification for 18 businesses, and they feel that this green business certification program that they're undertaking will have far-reaching impact on the capital region as a whole. This first time they have asked for grant funding of $1,500.
Great, thank you. Public, do you have any comment regarding this application?
Yes, sir. I did some looking into this organization, and I found that the institute mirrors quite directly the applicant's personal business as well. She's a consultant, okay? I've also noticed that on her LinkedIn account, I claim that a founding member of many nonprofit organizations, so I wonder where the focus is, if you're busy setting up nonprofit societies, and is there really a focus with this particular organization, or is it just another organization that eventually will, she'll move on from? That's my concern.
Great, thank you.
And also whether she'll benefit personally from the interaction between the nonprofit society and her personal consulting business.
Committee, Counselor Lucans?
Thank you. I appreciate Dwayne's comments. I also had some of those same questions, and I wish somebody was here to answer these questions simply because I see this as something that should be funded by business. I'm not sure why the city would consider supporting this type of thing, whether it be Victoria Builders or the Chambers or something of the sort. I'm not sure that it's something that aligns with my values to donate citizens' monies to, for grant and aid, so I had some questions. I wish somebody was here.
Thank you. Counselor Cullington and then Mayor Hamilton.
Thank you. The Deputy Director of Planning and I did meet with Jill a little while ago to talk about this program. She wanted to sort of explore linkages in with Colwood, and there are a couple of our businesses that are participating in the program. And actually, it's not reflected in here, but actually, Colwood City Hall has also been accepted into the pilot program. That was an initiative of Nora Creamer. So it's really just a kind of a checklist piece filling out, so I don't have a great, I mean, I wish that Jill were here to speak to it because I think she could kind of answer a lot of the questions, but I'm certainly not going to try and do that on her behalf, I think, you know. It would be nice to have somebody from the organization here, because I mean, I think they are doing a lot of good and interesting things. They're also working with the West Shore Chamber of Commerce, but I think it's always difficult for us when we don't have somebody to ask those questions of.
Thank you. Mayor Hamilton?
Well, my point was, is I do believe these folks are working with the West Shore Chamber and doing that, and I did find in here that it's Royal Baby Acrym Bites that are involved with the pilot project, but really, it is unfortunate that we don't have Jill or somebody here to speak to us and around this.
All right. Anyone else seeing none, then I will go to 4.12, which is the Vancouver Island South Film and Media Commission. Not seeing anybody here, I'll ask the Director of Finance to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Each year, the Vancouver Island South Film Commission approached council for a grant in aid. Last year's request was 500, and council and committee of the whole, sorry, recommended council $100, which was approved by council in the final budget. This year, they are asking for assistance with 2013 Youth Film and Media Education and Career Fair for $500.
Great. I will go to public. Nope, nothing. Committee? Counselor Day?
Thanks. I just want to point out that I can't speak to their specific operations, but the contacts that they have within the film and the entertainment industry may be very important to us in developing our economic vision for Colwood. So always good to be aligned with an organization who is able to make contacts for us in those fields.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I will bring this to a close and move to 5.1. The way I would like to do this, with permission of the committee, is we're going to go through each one, and Megan, for you? Oh, yes.
I just want to make-
You're out of order, but I'll let you go.
I just want to make one comment about the grants before you proceed. In the years past, we've always been able to read all their financial statements, their annual reports, and I know that takes up a lot of paper, and I can see not printing it out again this year, but if it's possible that any recommendations the council or committee makes to the council, if those applicants could have their information put on the website so we can better understand all the information that we used to be able to read.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a very good suggestion, and looking, can we make sure that, we don't need to have that as a recommendation, I don't think so, but we'll check with staff and ensure that that happens. So Megan, what I would like to do is it's going to be the same recommendation 14 or 12 times, which will read that the request for grant by, and I'll say the person's name, be forwarded to council for further consideration at a dollar amount of, and what I would like to do with the committee is, I would, we'll start with that. I will make the recommendation for what they've requested, and then we can have a discussion if it's valid or not. If we just want to fail it, that's, we can vote to fail it. If we want to change the dollar amount, then what I would suggest is that we fail the first recommendation and make a second recommendation that would be the new amount. Is everybody comfortable with that? Then let us move on to, so I will go first to 4.1, so the request for grant by the Belmont Secondary School Dry Grad be forwarded to council for further consideration at a dollar amount of $2,500. Discussion? Oh, yes, Counselor Cullington?
Just, I know there was a, there was a challenge around some of these grants, and some of them, the applicants had a reasonable amount of notice of appearing, and then some of them, and perhaps the Director of Finance can help me, actually received notice that this meeting was happening pretty late in the day.
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, we discovered very late in the process that Bike to Work, Dialogue and Dispute Resolution,
the Victoria Volunteer Society, the Synergy Institute, and the film sent all of their
applications on time, but to our generic email address that is not checked very often until now. It's checked very regularly. So the Belmont Secondary School, we did have contact with them, for example, but like Counselor Day say, the lady that is sort of overseeing it is kind of in and out, and the email away, email address that we have for her is like just a private email, it's not a work, so I did not know how, and she checked that.
So, I mean, on my point, perhaps sort of slightly less with this one, but perhaps particularly more with reference to the two later, is would committee consider deferring a decision on those and give them an opportunity to appear at the beginning of our next budget meeting? I'm just wondering if that would help our decision-making, rather than sort of feeling like we're making a decision in absence of information that we might want.
Well, why don't we make that decision when we get down there?
We get that, okay. And I just raised it just because this was one where we didn't have a presenter.
Right. No, understood. Yeah. So we do have a motion. Mayor Hamilton?
Just, I want to remind council that 2014 for this request will be, if we take it at its full value, there could, you know, indeed be a double request the following year for, you know, the double amounts because there will be two high schools in 2015.
So are you making a suggestion that we halve it?
If we're stuck up here, I'm just saying that we're, you know, it's the will of the table here. I'm certain that we can, you know, that supporting what we've given in the past is probably not unreasonable.
Which was?
Thousand bucks.
Thousand.
But I'm just, you know, if we, if we follow through with this, they should be also advised that, you know, that amount may be, you know, the last one.
Counselor, yeah, Counselor Lucans?
Yeah, I, when I read the information, I wasn't really clear why they jumped from 1,000 to 5,000. I didn't really see-
It's 2,500.
2,500.
Oh, excuse me. My apologies, I was looking at the one above. Still, I just, I don't see validity in the application as to why a $1,500 increase, so I'm personally comfortable with what we did last year at 1,000, but I'll wait to hear other comments.
Counselor Day?
I kind of concur with the, going with the lower amount, because it's always much easier, it's really difficult when you're trying to organize one of these events and you've always had X amount of funding before, and then suddenly you find that you have to come up with more, so I think that is difficult. But I also think that they asked for more than we gave them last, last year as well, so that might be why the 2,500, but I would be more comfortable with a lower amount, knowing that we are going to be supporting two schools in creating a dry grad. I would assume, I don't know, maybe they will combine to do their dry grads, I don't know.
So how do you want to do this?
Well, I'll go to the Director of Finance, and then we can vote this one down and then go to another one. Yep.
Yes, I just wanted to add that Belmont Dry Grad did put forward a request last year for 2,500. They've been asking for the same amount each year, and we have, they have been given approval for 1,000. The other thing to keep in mind is that if this 2,500 is in the core budget, it's in the core budget next year and can be split between the two high schools. If we cut it down, then it's not in the core budget, if that makes sense.
Well, it wouldn't be in the core budget because this is a grant, so this is just a one-year grant. We're not giving it, it's not like a permissive tax where we're putting it every year.
The, it's, the grants are still from part of our core budget.
Yeah, the dollar amount you're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, I'm going to call the question on the original, so that was for a dollar amount of $2,500. All those in favor? Opposed? Fails? So we will make a, who wants to make the motion, just, you can just say the dollar amount.
A thousand dollars.
Yeah, a thousand dollars.
Okay, and move then to the mayor for 1,000. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Recommendation that the request for grant by the Big Brothers Big Sisters of Victoria?
Can we just up and do the, go on the, like, you're missing the-
The seniors.
Seniors.
Oh, no, no, I'm following, I'm, yeah, I'm following it.
You're going on that one? Okay.
I'm just following it off the agenda, so we'll get to 4.4. Well, if it makes you happy, I can do that.
No, no, it's fine. We'll go BBC's.
Okay, so we're at Big Brothers Big Sisters for the amount of $2,000. And discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the request for grant by the Crisis Intervention Public Information Society for $1,021. Discussion? Mayor?
I know these are, this organization has struggled in the past, but I believe that they do play a fairly integral part throughout the system. They are realigning themselves and getting into, you know, the newer technology and getting to the kids. We, in the last two weeks, lost a young lady to a suicide here in our local area, and, you know, it's, it's important that we have the availability of programs like this and individuals who work within these programs that can be available and do that reach out. So I would certainly support this and even in consideration, you know, if we have the opportunity and ability to increase on that one, I think it's important.
Counselor Day?
Yeah, I just will echo that what I hear at the Family Court Committee is that they're very valuable, that they're valuable to the school district with the suicide prevention education that they provide. And, yeah, it was, my daughter came to me to talk about the girl that we lost, and, you know, it's just- the girl that we lost, and, you know, it's just very, very hard on the community, so we, we really, what I've heard is nothing but good things about them, and that their portal is very successful.
Any other discussion? The only thing I would like, I'm supportive of the grant, but I, I, I understand where they were coming from with this inflation thing, but for simple, in making everything look clean budget-wise, I would like to actually lower it to a thousand dollars even, rather than this thousand twenty-one, it just, it just looks funky to me, and it seems superb, but anyways, we'll see what happens, if people want to keep it at that or what. So anything else, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, it fails.
I would move that the amount be twelve hundred.
Okay, I, comments, discussion? I know the only thing I, I, I will not support that, just because I, I don't like the idea of giving more money than somebody's requested, that seems strange too, so, but any other discussion, seeing none, all, all those in favor?
I didn't know if you're putting your hand up.
Oh, did you have your hand up?
But every time, every time you looked away, I put it down, you looked, I couldn't get it up fast enough.
So, I, so you want to talk, or you want to vote?
Of course I want to talk, and I, I also, in listening to them speak, I'm not sure why they kept their grant at the same level as last year, understanding that they're going through some conversions, you know, and I, I appreciate the, their respect for our tax dollars and what we're using, but I also would support the twelve hundred dollars, you know, I really believe that there's value in this nonprofit, and the people that are volunteering their time for it, and I think it's a great cause in our community, I do agree with you, it's kind of odd to give them more money, but at the same time, if they came back next year and said, you know, we'd like twelve hundred dollars, I would have probably no problem supporting that either, I think it's an appropriate amount that they're asking for, thanks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question, all those in favor, one, two, three, four, five, opposed, and I note that one, please. Moving on to One Defuca Seniors, oh, I'm sorry, so the request for grant by the One Defuca Fifty-Five Seniors for five thousand dollars. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in, oh, did you have a question?
Nope.
All those in favor, opposed, okay, that fails.
I'm, I'm thinking a, a smaller amount, closer to what we gave last year, and I know they're, they're doing some great fundraising, and I know it's very important for seniors to get out in the bus, I, I think that's critical, but I think they can still do it.
So did you want to make a motion for dollars?
I'm trying to think what the amount should be.
I will, while you're thinking, I, I, I'm actually very supportive of the five thousand dollars, the experience that I've had with these people at, at West Shore Park and Rec, you know, if we talk about maximizing dollar value, it's huge, I mean, so for the five thousand dollars that they're suggesting, and, you know, they're looking at getting a hundred and thirty thousand dollar bus, I mean, I, I don't, I think we owe that to our, the seniors, and it's seniors in our community, so, I mean, I, I will be supporting whatever dollar value that we can get up to. Counselor Lukens?
Thank you, I've been struggling with this one, and I totally agree with your rationale, and actually, if it was to be put back on the table, I would also support the five thousand dollars, it is a lot of money, but also, having been down and helped out with them a little bit in a couple of the programs, they really do everything, really, they are the hub and heart of our community there, so, sorry, I didn't support it the first time around, but if it's put back up, I would.
Counselor Sullivan?
I'd like to concur with Counselor Lukens and the rest, we'd like to keep it at five thousand, and I'm willing to reconsider my decision.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to reconsider also, then, I, I just find it, it's hard, because they do, you know, they come back, I realize they're trying to fundraise over several years, and it's a large grant for us.
Okay, I will, I will put the request back, my, as, we don't have a CAO, but I'm just going to assume that I can do that, maybe I'll have somebody else move it, who?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we support a five thousand dollar grant.
Great, thank you, I'll call the question again, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Four point five, the Royal Canadian Legion, ninety-one, for two thousand dollars, I've made that motion, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. The West Can.
West Calm.
Calm, thank you, West Calm Metal Land Society for a thousand dollars, which I've so moved, discussion, Counselor Day?
I just want to offer support, if, if there was ever a program in your community that helps your seniors, your kids, everyone, this is it.
Yep, any other? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Your Literacy Connection West Shore for five hundred dollars. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Four point eight, Bike to Work for fifteen hundred dollars, which I've so moved, discussion? Yeah, Counselor Lukens?
I love this program, but I just can't support it from a, it's something people either want to do or don't want to do, it's a, it's not a must-have, and I do support healthy communities, but I just, I've never supported this program since I've been voted in, it's not because I don't agree with it, but I just have a problem from a philosophical perspective of supporting it when it's, again, self-driven by the people whether they want to participate or not.
Counselor Day?
Thanks, I just want to respectfully point out that we support vehicular traffic all the time, through our, one of our biggest requisitions for the city, for, for roads and maintenance, and this is a small contribution to what could solve many issues, especially affordability issues, and especially traffic jam issues, and I think it, it's money in our pocket to get more people riding their bikes.
Thank you, any other? Counselor Cullen?
I guess just to add that I also think we get good value out of this, because I think we get a lot of good profile out of the celebration stations out here, and I think the relationship we have with them through our acting advisory committee, I think really does help this community, so I think perhaps we, we do benefit proportionately.
Thank you, any other? I'll just reiterate what I mentioned when I was looking at the appendix B, I just, I'm not, I can't be supportive of the fifteen hundred, I would be supportive of seven hundred and fifty, just because I think we're paying more than our proportionate share compared to everybody else on the West Shore, so, with that said, unless there's anything else, I'll call the question, fifteen hundred right now, all those in favor, opposed, it fails, you, me, and Teresa. So it's a tie, so a tie, tie fails, or tie, yeah, tie fails, Counselor Day?
Just wanted to point out that the other communities have been requested for the same amount as us this year.
I'm happy to put seven fifty, but did somebody want to do anything else before I did that one?
Especially considering they're putting our logo out there, and there's going to be more celebration stations.
All right, I'll do a thousand if we get a logo. Better make sure that logo's on it, I'm not, paying two fifty for that logo. Also, so do you want to make that motion?
It's a big logo now.
Okay, so it's, it's motions for a thousand, all those in favor, opposed, carried. The, excuse me, four point nine, which is the Dialogue and Dispute Resolution Services Society for fifty-five hundred dollars. Discussion, Counselor Day?
Thank you, this is one that I had difficulty with last year, and I'm not sure if it's because I don't know enough about them, they, they seem to operate similarly to the Single Parent Resource Center from her presentation, but the lack of any accreditation, affiliation, I don't know what the difference is between coaching and counseling, to be quite honest, and I, I think it's great that there's more services in our community, but I have a hard time with supporting them with such a large figure, given that I don't know more about them, and maybe that's my fault.
Any other discussion? I know the, sorry, the, I know the only thing I, and it, dollars are dollars, so it's funny that I think this way, but it seemed easier last year when it was just a permissive tax, right, because you weren't collecting it, but you, it wasn't theoretically, I mean, it theoretically was costing the city money, but it feels different for some reason to be giving dollars, and I know it shouldn't, I know there's really no difference, but I, I sort of have the same strange feelings as Counselor Day.
I just want to say, she mentioned, though, that she was asked to do it in this fashion.
Yes.
I'm not sure where that comes from, and I don't, you know, I mean, I will, I don't want to have anyone put in the position of, they thought they should have been doing this instead of that, and then they miss out doubly, out on their end, you know, we've created a problem.
Thank you, this particular permissive tax exemption was approved and the bylaw was amended, but upon closer review of the policy and the intent of the bylaw, staff felt that it was inappropriate that they were given the ta, permissive tax exemption, the lady mentioned that she have two years, she actually only got one, that one year automatically expired at the end of October, so it's no longer on the table, at that time, staff were supposed to evaluate their annual report, and to determine whether, it, well, actually, I think it was several months back that they provided annual report, and the intent was that if it looked like the city was getting value for money, we would ask for the permissive tax exemption to be extended up to ten years, as allowed in the community charter, but again, on closer review of the charter and the bylaw and our policy, we kind of realized we should never have done this, it wasn't really the intent of our, our permissive tax exemption bylaw is focused more toward religious charitable organizations in the community, churches, so this group was asked to, we, they, we told them it was not really appropriate, and that the proper vehicle for them to come for money is through the grant process, so I did not feel that committee should feel obligated to give them fifty-five hundred, that's just what they, they got for one year, and now they're asking through a, a process that allow you to be flexible about how much you give them, permissive tax is fixed, and this is variable.
Thank you, Counselor Day?
Just also wanted to point out that there's additional costs that were incurred by the city to advertise for the permissive tax exemption under the bylaw, so it's actually costing us less, even if we approve the fifty-five hundred, and I, I do have a little bit of discomfort with this, but I also think that it's a valuable service available in our community.
All right, Counselor Lukens, oh, and sorry, Counselor, Counselor Sullivan, then Lukens?
Thank you, through the chair, I, I have a bit of a background in conflict resolution mediation, and there is a huge difference between coaching and counseling, the credentials are completely different, from what I heard from the presentation, that they're involved in large part in integrated case management, and, and I like to call it knitting and weaving, various tapestries together to assist families who are in crises, and, and severe crises, from the sounds of it, so although we're not as familiar with this organization as we are with some of the others in our community, I would one hundred percent support their grant request, because I know it's just so important, this work.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Lukens?
Thank you, and I echo that, you stole some of my thunder, just with respect to the case management, that she really emphasized that we know how many people fall through the cracks at the provincial level and with the ministries, so I as well, don't have any problem with the amount, because I think we are getting value, but what I would like to propose is maybe that we get an evaluation sheet from them, and also Pacific Center and a couple of the other ones that are very similar, to really get an understanding of what their contribution is in the community, just on a bigger scope, and having all the information in front of us.
Okay, anything else, anybody? Seeing not, seeing nothing, I'll call the, the vote, all those in favor, this is for fifty, uh, carries. You know what, I'm, I'm, your, your, your nail polish is throwing me off, it's like, ooh, that's very funky, Greater Victoria Vol, shiny lights just kind of distract me, I'm like a cat.
A crow.
Uh, Greater, Greater Victoria Volunteer Society for a thousand dollars, that's crazy. Discussion? Oh, yes?
What did you ask, evaluation of dispute and Pacific Center, and all of?
It's not need to, no, it's, what's the other one, but just a comparison about what they offer as far as services go, so a summary sheet, much like we've got, but break down what those groups are, so that we know where their strengths and weaknesses are, and what their, their correlations are, you know, how they work with each group, would maybe help us better understand.
Just, just on that, I'm, I might be able to facilitate that through my contacts at Family Court, and just try to get a sense of those services offered, offered, and report back?
Yeah, perhaps you could report back to when this comes to council?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be great. For, so, all right, we're jumping back to four point ten, which I've made that motion for the Greater Victoria Volunteer Society for a thousand dollars, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Four point, okay, now this is, oh, I'm not going to make the motion, do you want to make a motion to defer on these two?
I, yes, I would like to at least provide these two with an opportunity to present at the beginning of the next budget meeting, and then for us to be able to make a decision at that time, because they, they might be terrific, they might not be, but I think we need to hear from them.
Based on the fact that they submitted, but they.
Yeah, yeah, but they did get, I know, I know they got very short notice around this meeting, and so I, I just want to give them a chance.
So with that motion, can we, which, so are you thinking sending it to council, or you, no, no, so at the December seventeenth meeting, or eighteenth?
So, so to defer a decision on four point eleven and four point twelve to the next committee of the whole budget meeting, and to notify the applicants and invite them to present.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing that, oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, and is it possible in future that we make it very clear on our applications that the email that they must be sent to is very specific, and also put on there that if it's sent to any other email, that it will not be eligible or available, that way we clarify whatever issue we have with this, and everybody has the same information.
Sure, I suppose we could do that. I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Next meeting will be on December eighteenth at six, or is it six? See, I'm learning, six, right? Well, that's what you did, what'd you do? Now you're doing, now you're. Now you're doing, now you're, uh, you're just confusing me. What time? Sorry, are we doing it at six? Well, that's what I... Anyways, it's at six. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you, everybody. Dwayne?
I'd like to thank the Co- Committee of the Whole on behalf of all the citizens of Callard who couldn't make it tonight and they sent me as their rep.
Thanks, Dwayne. We appreciate your participation.
I have. I've already adjourned, you guys, we've heard this talking off the record.